Great. Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, we are here today for Council Bill 20-0527, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 20, or June 30, 2021. My internet is lagging. Chris, can you still hear me? All right, perfect. Okay, joining me, I'm Councilman Eric Costello, I'm District Chair of the Committee. Joining me are Councilmen Ryan Dorsey, Third District, Councilwoman Shan Snee, Thirteenth District, Councilback President Sharon Green Middleton, Sixth District, Councilman Isaac Kitzey Schleifer, Fifth District, Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District. On behalf of Mayor Jack Young, it's Nita Femilis and Matt Stegman. On behalf of Council President Brad Scott is Dominic McIlhley and Rebecca Simmons. We are here for Department of Planning. Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you. I think you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the Committee. So we have a brief presentation today. Hopefully, it's a little bit better than last year's. I understand that the Council probably has a copy of the budget book in front of them, so I've created this PowerPoint to sort of run parallel to that. So I'll get started. If I could get the next slide, please. In the budget book, we are divided into five services. We're a small department of about 50 people, we're divided into five services in the budget book. It roughly correlates to our organizational structure. I put an org chart in here to show you that, or how that correspondence goes. You will see that several, two of the services have maybe more than one division in it. So we have a service for land use and urban design, we have a service for CHAP, we have a service 763 includes community planning and policy and data analysis. Administration includes equity communication and outreach. And Service 765 includes food policy and sustainability. So if I could get the next slide, please. Service 761 is where our staff that serve the Planning Commission reside. It is largely a regulatory group. We process your bills, city council bills, and subdivisions and other things that regulate land use, rent land use in Baltimore City. Our performance measures are at the bottom. They have to do with the timeliness of our review. Major items this year, as you know, because of the virus, agencies were asked to eliminate positions, eliminate vacant positions, I should say, and this particular division lost two positions, which may or may not affect our timeliness in the year ahead. Couple other minor things, there were some allocation for special grants in anticipation of us acquiring some. We transferred a food policy position which we incubated in the department, formally transferred that to the Baltimore Development Corporation. That position pursues food policy issues specifically around grocery store access. And then there's a paperwork change since last year where the Planning Commission members themselves, for some reason, were listed as full-time there.
Excuse me, Chris. Could everyone on the call please mute themselves? Thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, sir. Next slide, please. The second slide is our CHAP, our Historic Preservation Service. Again, no major changes in this one. To remind you of CHAP's duties, it includes landmark and district designation, both local and national district designation, permits for exterior work on the local side, manages the tax credit projects, which includes both local and national registered districts. We manage, physically manage, I guess, or maintain the city's monuments, of which there are almost 100, I believe, and provides technical expertise to various city agencies and organizations. The budget basically maintains the current level of service and the performance measures are, again, they are number of days of review for, in this case, tax credit application or local or national designation. Next slide, please. The third service, 763, this is a big one. It's been a focus of mine since I've been here a short year. We have a new, we have a new Division Leader for Community Planning and Revitalization. Some of you may know Shal Krishani was former Director of CPA, the founding Chair of the Sustainability Commission, and for the last few years has served as the Chair of the Baltimore School Board. Really happy to have her on board. There are really no major budget items in this. There, the list you see in front of you are the usual churn of small grants opening and closing over the years. There's nothing in particular I want to bring your attention to. Note that the casino local impact funds rest in this service, both for South Baltimore and for Pimlico. And I don't think I mentioned this, but our management team is on this, on this call and/or WebEx, and they are available if there are any questions about those. The performance measures for this are a little more interesting. The number of external stakeholders engaged, that's a wild number, in the thousands. And then this, this service also provides administration and management of the urban renewal permit system, so that turnaround time on that's a performance measure. The, the next service is 765. Can we, we got that up. This is the service where our Office of Sustainability lives. So the Office of Sustainability does a number of things. So it's, it both manages the sustainability plan itself, but it also provides regulatory services primarily for environmental regulations, which include floodplain management, forest conservation, management critical area permits, manages the city's landscape manual regulations. And hopefully, you all know now that it also provides the city, specifically MEMA and the state federal FEMA, with natural and man-made disaster planning. There are a lot of notes on these. I won't go through them because I don't think any of them are significantly, they're of a significant nature. This, this service does, is very aggressive with fundraising. I guess I should note the recently adopted by this Council Plastic Bag Reduction Program. There are funds in that for the outreach program, and that's essentially provide the outreach services, the PR services, and to purchase a lot of, a lot of non-plastic bags to begin, to distribute and begin the, begin the program. You'll see the performance measures are around the percentage of Climate Action Plan Recommendations completed, and again, an engagement performance measure. Finally, the Administration category service, 768, is a little bit of a catch-all. The most notable thing for this year, I think, is that this is where the city's Census Program lives. So as you know, this is 2020. Baltimore City Planning Department is the lead on achieving our goal, which is a 73% self-report rate. If you look on the Planning Department Census webpage, you will see a dashboard for that performance. We, I can say, I know for sure that we have just passed the 50% rate. So we are moving along. Everything is different now. This year, we distributed about $100,000 worth of small grants, small community-based organizations for outreach around the census. Unfortunately, a lot of that, those gatherings were either eliminated or postponed because of the virus. But we have a whole team managing conversion of that outreach strategy to social media and other forms of communication among our grantees. We support a citywide, a citywide committee, complete count committee on this. And I think we are on track to reach our 73% goal. Also, this year, last year, for the first time, it is, the cities four art districts were funded through this service. That money is embargoed now. We hope to, we hope to loosen it up at the end of the fiscal year. So that's our service presentation. As you know, the Planning Department has responsibility for the city's capital budget. This slide shows roughly the calendar of the, of the capital budget. Unfortunately, when I appear at these hearings on the operating budget, it's at the end of the capital budget series. Roughly run, it starts in the fall when the Planning Department determines from the Finance Department that targets the amount of money we will be given to distribute in the capital budget. Then there's a couple of month process with the agencies where they then submit their requests by, I believe it's early December. We have a month or two to evaluate those and try to get them down to an affordable level. And then in January, starts a six-month public review process with the Planning Commission, and goes to Board of Finance, Board of Estimates, and to the City Council. We work closely with the Finance to determine the target, target ranges. As you know, the target ranges in affect agency budgets, but they, they affect the city's bond rating and lots of other things. So that's a collaborative exercise with the Department of Finance. I believe somebody from Finance Department is on this call also. The next page are the evaluation criteria set by the Planning Commission. These are very broad general criteria that have not changed. And so I will keep going. And the next page is the fund sources. So a variety of sources, the one the city has most control of, most influence over is the general obligation bonds. These are what go to the voters. And in fact, this year, they will go to the voters. They go to the voters every two years. Those, it's evolved over the years. Now, we have four broad categories that go to the voters in November that form the basis of the capital budget. I shouldn't say the basis, but the big part of the capital budget. We also, the Finance Department, as I said earlier, determines the amount of general funds, if any, that can be put into the capital budget. We also have some highway user, very, very limited highway user revenue funds for this project and transportation revenue bonds, which I believe where we are now spending more to service the bonds than we're getting from them. So that's not promising. A variety of state funds, like Program Open Space, which you've all heard of, Local Impact Aid, federal funds are like community block grants, FHA, those kinds of things. And the largest single item in the capital budget are the utility funds and water and wastewater revenue bonds that make up about 60% of the capital budget. If we go to the next slide, you'll see a pie chart with that on it. Again, the revenue loans, these are water and wastewater, for example, are the single largest. I would note that the county grants also are water and wastewater funds for the, for the large part. The red slice is the $80 million that the city has authorized to sell general obligation bonds every year. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the distribution of those funds. Again, 74%. When you add up the county and the utility funds, 74% of the, of the distribution is going to Department of Public Works. And you can see the rest of the slices in the non-blue colors. The next slide, very high-level distribution of the capital budget this year, divided into youth and families, community work, the economic development work we do, and the infrastructure work that we do. Now, I will note that I do have, I brought a copy of the capital budget with me, and the Chief of our Capital Budgeting Office is on this call. If there are questions about specific projects, we can, we can talk about that. But I'm going to switch next to the particular part, the highlights of this year. If we get the next slide? Yep, we'll wrap it up. Okay, next slide. This was because of the virus, there was a lot of back and forth. So we started with a very low amount, essentially of all general obligation bonds. Finance Department decided before the virus hit that they could contribute some, some general funds to that. But then there are several changes after that. One, the BSET for the ransomware funding was financed instead of paid for out of, instead of paid for out of bond funds, and consequently, a large percentage of the general funds were taken back. I did want to end up with the equity analysis. Last year, we started that. If we go to the next slide, oh, here. So this is the second year now that we have done an equity analysis of the CIP. So you're seeing that FY 2019-21, the map and the graph next to it. I remind you, our equity framework is borrowed from the Urban Sustainability Directors Network. It's four components, structural equity, procedural equity, distributional equity, transgenerational equity. And we have an equity action plan with five primary goals, as well as a number of sub-goals. I think it's worth reading through those. Improve and increase dialogue connects between the Department and under-served communities. Ensure the Planning Department staff reflect the demographics of the city. Use an equity lens to develop, revise, and evaluate city policies, and use an equity lens to prioritize capital investment and, and to evaluate the Planning Department's internal practices and policies. So what's new about it, well, we added the second year, so that's, that's new. As you know, or may remember from last year, the challenge is mapping a lot of these projects, particularly in DPW, are bulk accounts, also in HCD, I should say, in transportation. Last year, we were able to map with some degree of certainty approximately 50% of the CIP, and this year, we got it up to 60%. Some agency have, have really improved, I would add. We want to call out Wreckin' Parks, for example, for their, their transparency in the equity analysis. We're also, this year, we will begin, we will introduce another step into the CIP processes. So we will insert an equity analysis before, before we take the CIP through the planning, through the review process. So even before it goes to the planning process, we will do, we will give the agency some feedback so they can adjust their, their own CIP prior to the public process. And we're committed to partnering with the Office of Civil Equity and Civil Rights to continuously refine this and have begun that conversation with them. So that is the, I think there's one more slide, I believe, Lori summarizing. Yeah, there, the action plan and the key programs, which I did not go over with that. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Dominic, can you, Dominic's on here, or the Council President that we're planning right now. He's dealing with some Board of Estimates issues, but I'm certain that he'll talk to you all. Excellent work on that.
Councilman, I'm not, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. You were just very low.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Now we can't hear you at all.
You're extremely faint by comparison to everybody else. Extremely. Almost inaudible. Now inaudible. Can't hear me. Is that better? Okay, I'll do that for now, and then I'll try a new headset. Councilman Dorsey, thank you for the compliment. It's one of the kinder things you've said about me. I do appreciate it. Chris, I want to touch on Service 762, Historic Preservation.
Yes.
Percent of completed authorization to proceed permit applications processed within two business days as a performance measure. We had a goal of 88% in 19. Our actual was 79%. We had a goal of 88 in 2020. Just want to know where we're, where we're at, if we're on track to meet that goal, and also why the reduction in the goal for fiscal '21 from 8% down to 20, or down to 80%.
Okay. Let me try to repeat the question. I think you're talking about Service 761, and the performance measures.
No, 762.
762.
Historic Preservation.
Got it.
Performance measure around effectiveness, which is the percentage of completed authorization to proceed, to proceed permit applications processed within two business days.
Yes, I understand. Are you, are you asking how the performance is?
Yeah, so in 2019, our goal was 88%. We only hit 79%. Again, in 20, our goal was 88%. I want to know if we're on track to meet our goal for this year. Also, I'm curious as to why there's been a reduction in that performance goal from 88% to 80%. That's on page 240.
Yes, I see. I am going to ask Eric Holcomb, if he's on this call, to answer that. Executive Director of CHAP.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I would have to double check, but I think some of that has to do with the ransomware that we hit. We had to sort of scramble to get things done. So I would say that was probably part of it. We also lost some of our data at that time. So those, those would be the two pieces, I felt. The reduction, I think, was just trying to look at what was happening and trying to get back on target from the ransomware piece. We lost a lot of, of our data on that, about six, about several months.
Okay. Because historically, this performance goal has been 88%. So my hope is that after this fiscal year, we're going to go back to 88%. That'll give them time to recover from ransomware, right?
That's correct. You know, ransomware and COVID, I hope we go back to above 88%. I hope we jump over to 90%. We're working close, more closely with HCD, and staff is really trying to figure things out. So to make things more efficient. So let's try to get that up.
Excellent. I think we're in agreement on where we need to be. I'm going to go to Vice Chairman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we can stay at Service, Service 762 with Historic Preservation, my question is around output number three, number of structures recommended to Mayor and City Council for local designation. I've felt like over the past two years, I've been kind of chasing, or reactive than proactive, chasing properties that probably should have already had a local designation, trying to help save those properties from, you know, either demolition or, you know, other types of development. But when I look at the, the goals, I don't even understand. For example, fiscal 2019, the target was 750. The actual was one. The target for fiscal 2020 was 100, is 120. Fiscal 2021, and the target is four. How do we even arrive at, at these numbers? What's the, what's the methodology? What's the thinking?
Thank you, Councilman, for that. You're absolutely right. There's a lot of guesswork there. When you see the things of 750, that sort of looks to guess what local historic districts will be coming online. We've been working with the Woodbury Local Historic District and also Charles North Local Historic District Designation Process. As you know more, as well as I do, since we've just been through that, those processes are really sort of driven by the community associations. And a lot of times, we would like to see these things happen quicker, but then we're going to take our time and work with the community as, as we move forward. So those are the reasons why those, we have those large numbers. We're in a process, in a designation process, and we think that it's going to be done in 12 months. And as we get moving forward and start doing the outreach and the surveys, then there is still a lot more community outreach to do. Sometimes those projects, Old Goucher, for example, was a district designation that that, that did not move forward. And we had several of those that did not move forward at the request, again, of the community. I absolutely agree with you on, this would be something that we could probably tighten up the performance measures and maybe break out from local district designations and landmark designations. We will be moving forward in the next month or so with several local landmarks. And of course, we would have now on, on the books for Woodbury. Woodbury will be a local district FY 2021, so that will be part of that. But I am, I am, I am open to sort of looking at that and making that more, making that performance measure more reliable. Thank you.
Thank you. And part of the reason I bring it up is that, I guess it was almost a month ago, I had, I was at a CHAP hearing as we were looking at the tractor building. And I didn't say anything out of respect for the CHAP Commissioner, but it was insulting and so, but I'm going to say something because I'm on my turf now. It was insulting to sit there as an elected official, to have the community chastised for not creating a historic district to protect what we as a city consider to be an important property. The city is just as responsible for promoting historic districts and making certain that key structures are protected. And we shouldn't just be relying on the community to solely have the sophistication to create these districts and to protect projects. We, we need to be proactive. We need to be there with them. We need to make certain that everybody understands the significance of these districts and these properties. And it was insulting to have a And it was insulting to have a, a commissioner who could have been more vocal in his role to, um, have a, a designation that could have protected all of the properties in the, in that area years ago, to kind of chastise the community for not being, uh, more organized along this effort. So, uh, I, I just felt led to say that, you know, w- we need help.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, Councilman, for that feedback. Duly noted. Uh, I am more than happy to just sit down with the City Council, uh, the, the City Council and talk about how we can be more proactive and, and really more, uh, preserve our, our landmarks and our districts in, in a more efficient way. We do have, uh, rules and regulations, procedures that we do follow. That does not mean that they cannot be changed, but that's, and we do not, uh, you know, we don't have to have, uh, uh, significant majority, uh, uh, support from the local districts. Um, but there are some things we want to do is to work with that. But I am, I, I, I hear your concern. Uh, thank you for that feedback, and I would, I would be more than happy to sit down with the City Council and work through that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my, my second question, yes, go ahead.
I, I just got one quick thing I want to add to that, if that's okay.
Okay, yes, please.
Eric and Chris, I'm not sure if this is, this is on you or it's on BBMR. Um, but this is something that, that Councilman Pinkett and I have been talking about for a couple of years now. This service area is another example where we do not have good performance measures. And, and these are littered throughout the budget book, where we have volume outcomes, right? And their, and their quantity, they're not quality. So like, if you look at three-one-one, the, there's a, there's a, uh, there's an output of number of calls that they take. Who cares? People are going to call. Your job is supposed to, is to take the call. Uh, you know, I want to see something qualitative that demonstrates that the agency is performing. And it's, it's been an issue that we've been bringing up every, and Council President Scott has been bringing this up too. Over, like, year after year after year, we have to come up with quality, uh, indicators for how well an agency and a service is performing, not this, this stuff about volume, because volume is irrelevant. That's your, your job is to deal with volume. How well you perform at your job is how well you deal with those specific issues, how quickly you get those issues resolved. So, Councilman, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that. Uh, my, my second question is from Service seven sixty-five. And, um, I wanted to look at the performance measure around the percent of climate action plan recommendations completed. Um, I guess my, my first part of this question is, um, when do we start, I guess, implementing or completing the recommendations for the Climate Action Plan?
Um, sorry. Um, I have, um, Lisa McNeely is the, um, Director of the Office of Sustainability is on this call, and I think she can answer that question better than I.
Uh, yes, Councilman Pinkett, if I understand correctly, um, so the, the, um, the cl- the Climate Action Plan was adopted in twenty-twelve, so we would have been starting the work, um, in twenty-thirteen. Um, the, um, just, uh, just to make sure, well, in anticipation of, uh, to, to further clarify what this performance measure is, these are the actions that are fully completed. Of the thirty-seven actions, quite a few others are in progress or advanced, uh, but we opted, we focused in this performance measure on those that were complete.
No, thank you. I, I, and part of the reason I was asking is because, um, and I didn't know how many recommendations were in there, but, um, if I, if I, I'm quite sure if I did the math, it would say that we are done. If, if I keep looking at these percentages, if we did eleven percent in twenty-sixteen, eighteen percent in twenty, I mean, it, you know, wh- where are we with the plan? Like, is it only like ten more recommendations to be completed?
So, no, that, those are cumulative. Um, so it's, um, um, we are, right now, the, the twenty-one percent actual in FY nineteen shows that we've completed eight of the thirty-seven. Again, that's, uh, completed. We have quite a few others in advanced or mid-stages.
Oh, okay, so the, so if we reached the target for fiscal twenty-twenty-one, that means that we've completed twenty-four percent of the plan.
Yes.
And, and we, and we only, we only, so why would the target for twenty and twenty-one be the same?
Um, so part of, uh, where that came from, we are looking right now, we are already starting to plan to do a refresh of our Climate Action Plan, again, from twenty-twelve. Um, there's, um, we've, we've, uh, the city has looked at a lot of new initiatives. We did not do that initial plan with an equity lens. And so we expect that new refresh to be done by twenty-twenty-one. And so, um, had, had not been sure exactly at that point how, what, what our completion rate would be, and so had opted to leave it as a kind of flat. We can, um, what we would certainly expect is that as we move forward, as we have that new plan, we could, we would continue to update this and might be able to set a higher target at a later date.
Right, so if, if we are completing a quarter of the plan every nine years, are we, are we anticipating the plan being completed in another thirty years?
I, I would hope that we would get it done sooner. Uh, with the sustainability plan, we set a goal for, for our greenhouse gas emissions reduction to hit, uh,
Right.
A twenty-five percent reduction by twenty-twenty and a thirty percent by twenty-twenty-five. We are, we are days, we are close to having, um, an update of our inventory so that we have a better sense of where we are. Um, in twenty-fourteen, which was the last full inventory, we've tended to do them every three years. Um, we were, we think we're about fifteen percent down below our baseline. Um, and so I, I think that at some level, the, uh, progress on the inventory might be a better measure of how well we're doing.
Okay.
I think that in the past, we had not used that as our performance measure though, because it's not something we update every year. It's a fairly data-intensive process. Um, I'm looking to bring that in-house. We could do an estimate every year and, um, if, uh, and it's something that we can look at in terms of revising the performance measure.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm, we're welcome seeing, you know, what that looks like, and so I appreciate that. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. I'm just curious in reference to, we keep using stakeholders, so on, um, Service seven six-one, I think on seven six-three, and I'm curious if we have identified who the stakeholders are? Like, if we go into any community, do we have five pinpointed or two pinpointed in each community? Um, are we just using a broad brush to say, yeah, the residents of Baltimore City are
You're muted, Chris.
I think the short answer is that we're using a broad brush. So, um, we, the Planning Department interacts with the public on almost everything we do. Um, so in it, but in different ways. So, for example, in Service seven six-one, uh, which staffs the Planning Commission, we may, I mean, we do a mailing for every Planning Commission that, that's over ten thousand folks, and some items may generate a very large audience. Um, whereas our community planners, for example, will be out in the community, they're not coming into the building, they're going out to the community association meetings or, or whatever the event may be, um, out in the, in the neighborhood. So everybody in the department just about is interacting with the community, probably , uh, very different aspects of the community, but they are generally interacting with the community all the time. Not sure that answers your question, but.
No, it, it does. You said, I was just wondering if it was a broad brush, because even, uh, going back to Councilman Pinkett's, um, concern and, and reference to how we identify some of these buildings, and I'm like, well, we have stakeholders and if they're, they're identified, they can help out with that, but you, I got it, it's a broad.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other question I had was in reference to, uh, uh, Service seven sixty-one, uh, the two-day decrease, and I think you already touched on it, um, with the cyber attacks is the reason why some of this stuff was delayed, so it had to do.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess mine is just more of, um, a comment and, uh, thank you for your, your team. Um, I, I think I kind of work, um, directly and sort of say, in, because of the PCDA Board and the efforts that are going on around, uh, Pimlico Racetrack and, uh, you know, uh, the Park Heights community. And, um, it, I know the last couple of PCDA meetings have been, um, not just interesting, but, um, and I know you can tell, uh, people, even before this pandemic, uh, people really started expressing their, uh, enough is enough, um, I guess, feelings on just, you know, not visually seeing progress. We know that a lot of efforts have been put into the human services pieces and the, um, organizations that you help fund, uh, through the agreements with the PCDA Board. And, uh, the year that you've been on and have taken that on, you have, uh, really been a calm, uh, you have a very calm demeanor. I mean, uh, and sometimes that's needed because people can just go off on a tangent, and, um, I appreciate your, your calmness and, uh, honing in back on the issues. And your team has been very good at that too. And just also want to give out a shout-out to James Ashford, um, which, uh, because Park Heights is a very vulnerable, sensitive area, and he has really taken time to understand each community and, and work with them. And it's just a pleasure to see that he has, um, did, he's really did extra in reaching out and just understanding and building relationships. And that's really what you're, a big part of what your agency is involved in. Um, and I'd like to, you know, uh, see more, more of that. Um, and I, I, I think that would go a long way. That's going to help continue to build trust in government with people that have been neglected for a long time. Each, and this goes on not just within Park Heights, but throughout the entire city. Um, I know, I feel that this is the term that's really going to start to see some of the bricks and mortar and the, um, some of those other needs fulfilled, like the food deserts. I just feel positive about that, and I wanted to just share that with your team. I know that we have times where, you know, we go back and forth with trying to resolve problems, but you seem to come through and listen to the people and, um, and, and try to work things out. So I appreciate that. You've, you've really brought your organization, I say, to the next level. And I call it more of an organization than a department, because you have a, you have a heavy weight on your head with all these different things, even from sustainability. I'm so glad to see Cheryl is a, a part of your team, because she, um, she brings a lot to, to the organization as well. So, um, please continue to reach out to me. We're kind of working with this and all this together, and that's what's, it, that's what's going to help Baltimore move forward, are those continued partnerships and, um, outreach efforts. And, um, I don't know if you want to add a comment to that, but I just want to get that across to you.
Well, I'd like to thank you, and, um, and truly, this has been the transformative year for the Park Heights community. I, I sincerely believe in that. As you know, we've been working on a master plan for over ten years in that neighborhood, and we have almost completed the acquisition of sixty acres of property in the middle of it. But also this year, Racing Act passed, um, which, um, provided strong, steady funding for the Park Heights Renaissance Corporation, our community partner, as well as financing for the racetrack, um, reconstruction. And then on top of all that, um, we had a big budget hit at the very end of the year, both in the city operating, but also in our capital. Um, so it has felt like a roller coaster, but I agree with you a hundred percent. We have a team in Park Heights, and it goes across the community, across the legislatures, across the staff. And I feel like we now have good communication and people understand where we are and hopefully where we're going.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and that's positive.
And then just one last statement. I know, um, uh, Carolyn Moselle, I think, had been working with Sarah, because I think it's really time to share with the community a timeline, I think, from two thousand and eight and on of where the spending is and where, because those, those myths, I'll say, are still out there, where is the money? So this is the time to do that timeline of, you know, of where certain pots of money has been going, um, and so people can, can see that, because they'll just take one little piece and run with, um, uh, misconceptions or myths about how things are being handled.
Right, I think, yes, and I, I think Senator Hayes suggested last night, uh, modeling more on the South Baltimore Casino District when, and having, uh, meetings throughout the year, a quarterly meeting or something like that, to, uh, keep the information going and more monitor the programmatic side of what we're doing. And I think that's an excellent suggestion. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you. That, that's all I have to say, um, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Slifer. And Councilman Pinkett, I'm going to turn it over to you to chair.
Can you hear me?
Okay, got you.
Did you call on me?
Um, you must be clairvoyant, Councilman Slifer.
I, I can't, I can't hear you. Did you hear or not?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, go.
And your, and your video feed looks like you're coming back to it from, you're there.
Uh, my que- my, my question is around for this, this coming year's budget, um, what, what, um, that, what steps is planning taking, um, to, you know, to improve upon the technology side of the department, um, especially as it relates to what we just went through with the cyber attack and as I think, uh, somebody.
I lost it. Councilman, you're frozen.
Yeah, you, you froze for, Councilman Slifer, you froze for a moment and we couldn't hear you. You're frozen.
You're frozen now.
Um, if it doesn't come up, maybe you might have to send us the question in the chat or the Q and A, and then we can ask it. And so, um, we get Councilman Slifer back up. I'll go to Councilman Henry.
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman Snead, did you have another question?
No, I'm good.
Um, until we get Councilman Slifer back up, I, I did have two other questions. Um, Director Rar, can you, um, define for, this is kind of dovetailing off of Councilwoman Snead, um, how do you define engagement? I'm looking at Service seven sixty-three.
That's a great question. Um, so going back to Councilwoman Snead's question, I mean, that, that is the heart and soul of, of that service, is the heart and soul of, uh, of the Planning Department. I think it ha- it has a, uh, proud tradition of, uh, with a strong emphasis on community planning, um, and, um, working directly with neighborhoods and has done that for a long time. I've been fortunate enough, um, since I've been here, to be able to beef that up. So we added two more planners. I think we now have a total of eleven, um, working directly with communities in their communities, um, as well as, um, bringing on Cheryl Krishani to head that work up. We've also integrated into that service our Inspire Plannings, which is, uh, community planning around a twenty-first century school, and our Green Network Planning, which is, um, closely integrated. integrated with Department of Housing Community Development's Impact Investment Areas and their, and their demolition work, as well as their, as well as beginning the, the neighborhood, I mean, the middle neighborhood work.
So, and part of the reason I ask is because the, the nature of the planning department, there really shouldn't be anybody in this city that you don't touch. And so that figure is woefully too low. You should, you should be, you should be engaging with 10s, exponentially 10 times more people than, than 6, 6,000. I mean, you, you have to in order for our city to move forward in the way that we all hope. And, and you have a variety of different ways of engaging with them, but you, you got to touch more people.
Thank you for that. I mean, the, the, Councilman Costello, these performance measures are very problematic for us. They don't lend themselves, as he said, to qualitative work, only quantitative work. So these, these engagement numbers tend to be quick. You know, we'll, we'll add up all the people that came to a planning commission hearing, or a CHAP hearing, or a sustainability open house. We asked the community planners to look at how many people they've engaged, either individually or in groups over the course of, of a month or a year. But you're, you're right. They are, they are very challenging to be even meaningful in a lot of ways. So we'd love to work with, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. And so, you know, I'll leave it up to you to, to figure out, and you and your staff to figure out, you know, how that is accomplished. But I just believe that you, you all have the ability through various outlets to, to engage with a greater number of stakeholders. I just wanted, if you could speak briefly, it's kind of related, can you talk a little bit about the Planning Academy? And, you know, how many participants did you have in this, this particular academy? Do you intend on expanding it? And do you intend on using technology to even expand the audience that you, that you could reach?
Good question. And we have Stephanie Smith, an Assistant Director, on here that can speak more closely to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. So, so far, we've had three cohorts on Complete the Planning Academy, which is a six-week training academy that happens weekly, about three and a half hours, two and a half to three hours every Wednesday for six weeks. We've had over 540 or so people apply. We were supposed to have our spring academy this, this, this year. And as we were kind of figuring out what the fate of just kind of the government touching the people was going to look like with COVID-19 and not really having an express path forward, we decided to just adjust the timeline of the spring academy to the fall and honor that, that cohort that we weren't able to bring together. However, there's two things I want to lift up. We had always planned this summer to have a youth academy because part of our Equity Action Plan is also about two things. It's about improving the pipeline of folks that are entering not only the profession, but the agency specifically, but also to continue to touch people across generations in the city. So that is something that is going to be morphing into an online product with some offline work that young people are going to be able to do. We are hiring someone through Baltimore Core to help manage that, that, that academy aspect. And we're, and we're working in collaboration with the Enet Prep Library System on that. But I, I wanted to lift that up. But moving towards the fall, we feel like a lot of what we'll be learning through the youth academy will help inform some of our online strategies as we, we suspect, you know, I know there's a lot of unanswered questions, but we suspect you probably have to move to online, you know, for the fall. So we're preparing for that. We just didn't feel we had the time to give a quality experience for the spring because it was all kind of moving, you know, all at the same time. We, we would have launched it in April, for example, you know, kind of when all the things were kind of coming to a fore. So, you know, we, we hope that we can one day return to, you know, obviously in person, but we're not going to suspend the effort because, you know, we, we don't have that clarity on whether we can come together or not. Because one of the things that we have found through a lot of the commissions that we support is that in some ways, certain people even speak up more and participate differently when you have different mediums. So, you know, this might be a way forward for us to incorporate it into the standing experience. And also, we've convened alums since, you know, COVID-19 is because our alums are already people who care a lot about their community and are active in feeding and relief, things of that nature. So we've convened them as kind of a network around the census and around other things that are happening in the community development space and make sure that they're aware of opportunities that they can avail themselves up from home and on, and online. But yes, we're, we're adjusting in the delivery of that product, just like a lot of different formerly in-person experiences are, are doing.
Okay. Thank you, Delegate Smith. Councilmember Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, while we have Stephanie Smith here, I want to jump the gun, but hoping we can get an update on the census and where, where we are.
Great. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So as, as Chris mentioned, we're over, I think, 50.5%, you know, individual household response, which is great because that's the self-response. Now, up until this point, the census has actually been updating responses on a daily basis. But starting June 1, they're moving to weekly responses. So, you know, we, we will get a better sense of things and a little bit of a slower breakdown than we were accustomed to. We've had some, some success inserting census communications into some of the city's relief efforts. So for example, the shelf-stable boxes that are being deployed at rec centers and with community partners, we've been able to put stickers both in English and Spanish that indicate how you can participate via phone, because we're realizing we may have tapped out on the capacity of some people to participate online if there are obstacles, whether that's access to the internet or any type of digital literacy challenge. So the phone tends to be the great equalizer for people. And we've been trying to communicate out that opportunity via things the city's already doing that are touching hard to count community members. And then through our, our grantee program, we convene them every Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Many of those grantees had wanted to do a lot of in-person events, as Chris mentioned earlier, and they've had to sometimes adjust that to inserting things into relief efforts they're already doing. But also, we've been doing some phone banking, because that's another opportunity to initiate, to engage our, our grantees and reaching out to community members that they know or in their footprint. But one thing that we're working on right now is that we all know that certain types of businesses have stayed open during this entire time, particularly stores like Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, Dollar Tree, and grocery stores and stores like that. So we are partnering through an initiative that we can put on receipts for Dollar Tree, Dollar Tree and Family Dollar specifically, English and Spanish language information about how to participate in the census. Because the reason why those receipts are particularly valuable is that they also incorporate cost-saving coupons and other messages that people are, are usually trained to look for when they're looking, when they check out. So we're just trying to find as many creative ways to get the message out when we are kind of hampered from having some of those fun activities, you know, that we had hoped to schedule for the summer.
Thank you.
And so I just had one last question before we recess, but I wanted to check with any of my colleagues if you had any questions. Councilman Henry, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I, there, there was a question that I thought had already been asked, but it turned out I was, I was confused. I had questions about the Community Association Directory, and I deliberately turned my laptop so that I can actually look at Chris here in the, in the chambers. So technically, a couple of questions about it. The, the most straightforward question is, there were, we were told that there was a software upgrade to the CAD in the past year. And so the question was, what was that upgrade and how did it make the system more useful?
I'm going to have a hard time with that one because I don't know of the software upgrade. What I will say is that I am committed to modernizing this document. And we have Cheryl and the whole community planning section working on it. They're, they're researching what other cities do right now. And my plan is to have a proposal to you all by the end of the year. As you, I'll just summarize it. This, there are, I believe, over 800 groups in that. Nobody ever goes off of it. Every, they, you keep adding. It's just so unwieldy now that it's almost useless in, in a lot of ways. My, my recommendation is to always consult your community planner because they should know better than the, than the book, which is, but, but we are, I don't know about the software updated, but we're committed to giving the whole thing an overhaul by the end of this year.
Okay. We, so speaking definitely on behalf of myself and possibly on the behalf of some of my colleagues, we would love to help you with that.
Yeah, great.
One of the, I will express it as a concern I have from my staff, is that we get calls from other city agencies asking for our list of communities when they should be using the CAD.
Right.
I mean, that's part of the point of it. And whether it would be as simple as the first round of this could be just taking each council district's list of current information as they have it, and have somebody maybe as an intern project or a mayor's fellow project, integrate the collective data of the individual council people with what you have right now to do sort of a first pass through the list to try to get it more accurate. But then the other, the other hope would be that the database itself could be programmed so that it annually sends out email reminders to the people listed in it saying, hey, is all this information still correct? And if it doesn't get a response, that entity gets flagged in some fashion so that somebody, maybe the community planner for that area, can proactively go look and see what's going on with this decision.
Sure. And I think, I, I think, I mean, you make a good point. I think our plan was, was, your staff is where we would field test all this work, I think, because you probably use it the most. So we were trying to come up with a, maybe a multi-tier system based on communication and outreach capacity, those kinds of things. I don't, we don't have that designed yet.
Oh, I would love to work with you on that.
Yep. That's what we'll be, as soon as we do that, we'll be coming to you and your staff to review that, to see if it's useful and it's accurate. And so, yeah.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So we're, we're 10 minutes over, and so I, I need to recess this. But what I'm, I'm going to ask is if Chris and Holly, if you can provide for us maybe a written update on our food access work, especially, specifically the work that's been done during this pandemic and how we've been addressing it, but how we anticipate, you know, filling those gaps that have been really highlighted in a negative way, you know, during this pandemic. I think we clearly see the need. Time won't allow for, for the discussion right now, but if you could report back to this committee, your, your progress in that area.
Will do. We're very proud of it.
So thank you, Director Rye, and your team. This committee is now in recess until 12:30, when we will have housing and community development. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.